Welcome to the October 3 meeting of the zoning subcommittee. We have a busy meeting tonight, and I don't mean just this meeting. We have four zoning amendment public hearings at the planning board, or potentially four. So we need to be focused tonight. And, you know, we'll try and touch on the petitions, but I think we might not be able to get to them. However, we, Bruce and I got introduced to them last week. If you guys have any questions that you want clarified, we can provide time for that so that you can think about it in preparation for a discussion later. So this meeting is being recorded for later broadcast by Amherst Media. Are there any other announcements?
I have a couple of announcements of a sort about zoning amendments. I had a brief conversation with town council on the phone this afternoon and got a last-minute email here addressing a couple of the issues that have come up. The first thing that he is recommending is that we not go forward with the rental registration requirements because it's his opinion that the impact of that would be to grandfather all of the ones, all of the units that are not complying with that. And while the intent of the, of that regulation is the opposite, the effect might well be to grandfather them, and it would be better to simply wait and keep pursuing the efforts that are already underway to gather more folks into the fold and then do the rental regulations in the spring.
Can I interrupt for a second? So you mean grandfather them permanently, or would that grandfathering be wiped out if a general bylaw is passed later?
If a general bylaw was passed and this provision was removed.
I see.
Grandfathered under the removed provision, thus protected from the yet-to-be.
Right. So the point of having it for six months is not overwhelming. The second thing is that he had spent actually quite a long time, we've been talking about this since August, being very careful and diligent to try and investigate the question of a moratorium on the conversion through the sale of various properties of low numbers of units, single families and duplexes and so forth. And he can find no precedent for establishing a moratorium on the transfer of property in that way. You can't, you can't do it. And he wouldn't support an attempt to do that. Basically, you can put a moratorium on the issuance of building permits and on anything that zoning allows you to do for a short period of time in order to address some emergency situation. But this falls outside the realm of zoning. This is a transfer of property from one party to another, and you can't tell people whether or not they can sell the property. For instance, he thought that it might have the effect of prohibiting a homeowner from moving out of their house and renting it, or from doing any number of other things that are fundamental and allowed. So that's the answer to that. I will, I will circulate the email. We just got it. And I'm reading from the highlighted portions of it.
So rather than a moratorium, what about putting a sunset clause in, imposing some restriction with a sunset clause of a year or two years or something? Is that, or is that what a moratorium is?
You can do that. Again, it needs to make sense in the larger picture of what it is that you're trying to do. You can always do that. Just as he said, you can put a moratorium on all sorts of things, but it needs to be done for a sensible reason and within the law. He also pointed out, and I'm sort of jumping the gun here, but in terms of the single-family and two-family regulations as drafted, that he thinks very strong arguments can be made for them, that they can be defended, particularly the single-family, creation of a second single-family category that is rented to groups of unrelated people. He would say, he also said, there's no precedent, legal precedent that he can find, but his conversations with other attorneys indicates that he thinks it can be, it can be defended. He would recommend for that and possibly for the two-family as well, or the, or the converted dwelling, but particularly for the single-family, that as part of, not the amendment, but that as part of the preamble in the warrant, that there be a preamble describing the public purposes that the, you know, whereas, dah 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 dah, following bad things are happening and we're trying to stop them, the following amendment is proposed. He thinks that that would help clarify in the case of subsequent, and in fact, he thinks the case of likely court challenge, particularly in college communities. The theory of law is a fun thing for people to play with, that would clarify for the courts what the community's intention was when town meeting takes an action.
Questions?
I have a question. He found no legal precedent for the moratorium, no legal precedent for the regulation proposed for single-family homes. One, he's advising is okay, and one he's advising not. So there is a gray area, and, you know, reasonable people might say, no precedent, let's go for it, and we'll defend it, you know?
Perhaps I misspoke. His language in describing the moratorium was, in their intervening weeks, he means since the last time we talked about this, I have not been able to find an argument to support a moratorium on the above-described conversions, which is different from legal precedent.
Want to be clear, we're not in a parallel.
No, it's not. I don't believe it's a parallel circumstance.
Okay.
That's a very good clarification to make.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, minutes. Those people had a chance to read minutes from the last few meetings.
These are mine. Bruce, you have that nice little watermark.
Okay, any, any comments or questions on the minutes or motion?
Move to approve the 29th, August 29th?
Second?
Discussion, all in favor?
Move to approve the, yeah, September 3rd?
Second? Oh, I'm not going to second because I wrote them.
You should move them, okay?
Discussion, all in favor? Okay. And I would propose that, that we accept by consensus the minutes of, of the informal meeting on September 19th.
I'm sorry.
I propose that we accept by consensus the minutes of, of September 19th, which was an informal meeting, without a quorum.
Would I need to abstain, given that I was absent?
You can just join consensus or, or not block, whatever, yeah. Okay, so we're going to move on to the amendments in front of us. Reminder again that tonight, at the planning board meeting, public hearings on converted dwellings, single-family dwellings, two-family dwellings, and residential, no, not residential dwellings, lodging and boarding house definition. So we have made a recommendation on lodging and boarding house. We're not going to discuss that tonight unless somebody really wants to. The other ones we've, we've discussed, and we probably should make a recommendation of some kind tonight. So, so let's keep that in mind, and with that, is there any discussion on converted dwellings?
I'd still like to consider changing it to four units in the RG instead of six, again, considering what's happening in town right now and the concerns people have.
Discussion on that?
I would just say, at this point, I would oppose that suggestion because it affects the whole town, and I don't know that that's even going to really address the problem that we've been dealing with. So I would be respectfully disagreeing.
Do we know whether there have been any or many conversions up to six as opposed to up to four?
Not very many. I can't recall anything over, in fact, much of anything over four. I know there are any number of older homes in the RG district with, you know, eight and more, four to eight, or eight or more, and it's in them. They're for the most part longstanding. There are certainly residential dwellings that are big enough to accommodate up to six units. One of the things I would point out to you that in your, in your packet that had not been there before is a summary of the zoning history of converted, the regulation of converted dwellings in Amherst, and would note that in 19, it was in 1984, 27 years ago, that, 27? 26? Whatever it is, years ago, that town meeting voted to increase the number of units allowed in the RG district from four to six units, and, but retained a limit of four in the more outlying residential districts. Prior to that, it had been four for quite a long time, everywhere. But this was in part a recognition of the reality that's out there, that there are many, many places where the houses have been and continue to be converted.
Bruce, can I ask whether you're proposing that in condition three, that the six be changed to a four, or that RG be moved to the one that says four?
RG be moved to four, leaving the others a theory.
I think just, just to add some more rationale to my position, I don't think we have any data that says a six-unit rental development is a source of more problems. We had some very persuasive data about owner-occupied versus non-owner-occupied, and I think that's a foundation for one of the changes we're considering making better. No information that says that the multi-units, and we have many historic, are not well managed or they're a particular source of a problem.
Further discussion?
So I am in favor of not changing that particular provision because I don't think that's the particular issue before us, so.
Okay. Yeah, I'm, I'm not inclined to change it either, but I wouldn't be opposed if, if the planning board wanted to change it. May I suggest, Bruce, that you bring it up at the planning board meeting and ask if the planning board wants to change it?
Sure.
But I don't think the zoning subcommittee wants to recommend that change. Any other discussion on, on the language in converted dwelling?
So I'm sorry that I've been, I realize, almost away from this committee for almost a month, for, I apologize for missing the interim meeting. But are we, are we going with a distinction of owner-occupied and non-owner-occupied for converted dwellings or not? So is it going to be parallel to the?
We, as it stands, I'm sorry, I'll answer that question.
No, that was a kind of a period, yeah.
Okay. In, in those instances where the conversion is going from one unit to two, and there are two different instances where that, that occurs, then owner occupancy is required. Other, other conversions, it's not, it's not required.
Where do we state that? I'm sorry.
It's under number two, standards and conditions?
Okay, good.
I believe, yes, under number six as well. Number six is distinct from number two because it is a circumstance where dimensional, I'm sorry, is that the, no, it simply reinforces it. In both cases, one to two requires owner occupancy.
But in the case of, so we still have the case of, for example, in some cases, people can choose whether or not to go to apply under the two-family house provision or under the converted dwelling, like the Amherst College cases, they could choose to.
What we're trying to do to address that, right now they can.
Yeah.
Right now they can sort of, you know, it's two units, do I pick a converted dwelling? Do I try to do it under duplex? What, what regulation is more amenable to what I want to do? If all of this gets adopted, one of the things that will happen is that the definitions of duplex and converted dwelling will become different enough so that it's either one or the other, but not potentially both. Duplexes, under your amendments to this point, but under the two-family dwelling, would be two-family dwellings created principally through new construction or very substantial expansion. Either it's brand-new, or it's an existing single-family to which a whole new unit has been created, or it's an existing single-family that's being divided internally in some portion and having an addition put on it such that it's very substantially the result of new construction. That's a duplex. Under converted dwelling, it is predominantly the creation of new units inside existing structures, whether those are existing residential buildings, whether those are outbuildings, whether they're attached buildings. It's, it is, in a more real sense, conversion of something that exists as opposed to new construction. And in fact, under converted dwelling, which is what we're talking about now, you had talked about creating a series of a sort of default maximum, no more than 20% of the total new habitable area can be the result of new construction under a converted dwelling, except in those instances where a number of criteria could be met. And there's an, on the second page, there's an A through E, which were the criteria that you had discussed, plus one or two. Urgent and compelling issues of public safety or health, the creation of a fully accessible dwelling unit, the creation of a dwelling, at least one dwelling unit that's permanently affordable, conversion that's predominant, predominantly the result of sustainable construction practices, including but not limited to significant improvements in energy efficiency, and then the list continues. Or if the conversion is proposed for one or more historic buildings, and then the criteria of historic significance are listed thereafter, and the conversion conforms to the National Park Service standards and guidelines for rehabilitation of historic buildings. These are all fairly high thresholds because that's where you want to start in this discussion. If you want to bring those down, you certainly can.
Thoughts?
Oh, so, so I own a single-family house that I want to convert to a two-family house. I don't want to occupy it. So what is it?
Depends on what are you building?
Duplex. I'm going, I want to go from a single-family existing house to a two-family existing, to a two-family house with no, no changes to the outside, but I don't want to live there. So I don't want to owner-occupy.
That's a conversion, and it would be owner-occupied under the, in the RG and RVC district.
No, I'm sorry, I'm in the RG district, but I don't want to live there. I want to rent both units.
You, good question. Go ahead.
Chris?
By special permit.
Except doesn't, doesn't exactly say that because it says that if it's in those RG, it says that if it's in those districts, it shall be site plan review, and it shall be owner-occupied.
It says.
Under number six, it would be by special permit.
But doesn't that contradict number two?
Ownor occupancy.
See, you can't do it.
You can't do it.
I know.
Well, what you can't do is not live there. You can convert it.
Right.
But you have to live there.
But it doesn't want to live there.
Welcome to Amherst.
I think that this should be reworded so that it's clear that this only, it's only by site plan review if it's owner-occupied. And you don't get to that until you get to the second sentence. So somehow in the first sentence, I think that should be brought to the surface.
Yeah, I think that number two ought to have class one, well, we don't call it anymore as a, yeah. In other words, ought to have, if you're not going to live there, then it's site plan. If you, I'm sorry, if you're not going to live there, it's special permit. If you are going to live there, it's site plan review. That's, that's kind of what, yeah.
It's, it is, if you're in the RG district, it's owner-occupied, period. You can't, you can't not live there.
But then I own a lot next door, and I can build from scratch a two-family house.
Yes.
That I don't live in.
That's right.
That's contrary to, it's not instinctive.
There's, I think one of the thresholds here is the likelihood that someone, remember what we're in part addressing here. We're addressing the growing problem of the conversion of existing houses to rentals, rentals to groups of unrelated people, creating problems in the neighborhoods, not by default, but predominantly. It's unlikely that an LLC, say, is going to buy the lot next to you, or you're going to turn yourself into an LLC and build a brand-new duplex and then try and recover the costs.
But there's also the neighborhood sort of protection, and so in other words, in some ways, it causes a financial incentive to tear down. So let's pretend that it's a house that's marginal shape. So really what we want to do is we, I would think, you know, assuming it's a nice house, create an incentive to repair it. And so actually, sometimes, yeah.
Well, you can't, you can't tear it down if it's going to be a converted dwelling. It would have to be a duplex.
No, I know, but, okay, I own a house that's not in a protected area, so it's not under, but it's marginal. So I'm trying to pay, I'm trying to figure out whether or not I should tear it down, start from scratch, or renovate it. And so if I tear it down and build a duplex, then.
That's, you don't have to live there.
I don't have to build, live there, yes.
That's right. And that's fine. Because unless it's a historical structure, you still have to go through demo delay, demolition delay, review.
It's historic.
Not quite, yeah.
Chris?
I still think this is confusing. I think that it should be, this number two should be specifically related to when it's site plan review, that it's, if it's going to two units and you want it to be by site plan review, then you have to live there. But you can have it go to two units and have it by special permit and not live there.
Yes.
Yes.
I think that's, that's what I'm supporting.
That's what you're driving to.
Yes.
And that's what, and I agree that that's what the language should say, and I would, I, I think the point is that they should at least be the same permitting track if it's an existing unit converting as building two new units. And I think that's what your example was. And I, and I just think we shouldn't, we don't need to talk about LLCs. We can talk about owner-occupied and non-owner-occupied because all an LLC is a legal structure for ownership. I mean, I, I formed a LLC with my sister, protects your other assets. It's not an evil empire, it's not anything. It's just a form of ownership.
Right.
It's different than one person, it's a corporate form. But I think we sometimes use it as a placeholder for something else that we've been struggling with, and I think we should neutralize that.
So I think, I'm listening to this discussion, it only reinforces the thoughts that I've been having recently, which is that I don't really understand why converted dwelling is a use. The use is duplex or, or multifamily, you know, whatever. So converted dwelling is really a development method. Why isn't it under chapter four? And then you can put it in table two about how you want to permit it.
Because it occupies a, a single property and often a single building, and a development method as often as not involves the subdivision of property, the creation of new roads, the installation of utilities. It's a, it's a larger scale question. This has been, and it's why we did the histories, this has been on the books since sometime between 1940 and 1958 as a use category.
Right.
Recognizing that, as a residential use category, recognizing that new units are created through the process of converting existing buildings.
Yeah, but, but you're still ending up with, with a different use. I mean, so if I, if I have a, a single-family house and I convert it to a duplex, or I convert it to a two-family house, to converted dwelling, and then I sell it in a few years, and then 10 years down the line, I, that person sells it to somebody else, that person is not selling a converted dwelling, they're selling a duplex, right?
No.
With, except you, you are selling all of the conditions that come with converted.
Yeah, you're selling the conditions, but.
Selling whatever their permit says the use is.
Right, but, but the person who's selling it and the person who's buying it is going into it thinking that what I'm buying is whatever this use is, duplex or whatever. They're, they're not thinking, I mean, obviously, they will have to conform to the conditions that are, that are put on the special permit. It just seems, it just seems to me that, that we're, I mean, we're, obviously, we've exposed a, a problem in, in how we're permitting these things. And I think the petition articles are clearly designed to work together. The converted dwelling and the duplex are clearly designed to work together. Ours, ours are an attempt to, to make a distinction. And I, I think, I mean, we're already pretty far down the road, and, and I'm not suggesting throwing out converting, converted dwelling now, because I think the changes that we are suggesting are improvement. But I think that we should consider in the future whether this is really a use or whether it's, you know, a way of, of dealing with your property. I think it's, it should be done in a different section of the bylaw, it seems to me.
I, I agree, and it goes back to an earlier conceptual discussion, two-family is a two-family is a two-family.
Right, exactly.
And even though we're far along, and I think we're making some improvements because we're being clear about owner occupancy versus not, we can still tweak this so that it's at least consistent with those other types of methods of creating a two-family.
Also, I have a question about the term commercial.
Okay.
Jen, you have a question? I think Bruce is going to answer this. I know the bottom line, the dilemma that we're trying to prevent is two-family turning into commercial rentals to aid unrelated tenants. So there is in that sense, even though you might rent to a family, if there's a definition of commercial that's somehow differentiating that, I don't know whether that's subject to zoning.
I actually, I had a conversation, when we get to single-family dwellings, I was going to bring this up, and I'll bring it up here. I had a conversation with, again, with town council this afternoon, and one of the things that he recommended taking out of the single-family amendments was reference to the residential use as a commercial enterprise, not confusing, because what we're, what we're really talking about are residential uses that have greater-than-normal impacts, rather than trying to define it as, redefine it as a commercial use, means shifting it into something else, and confuses the whole process. It's really, these are really residential uses that because of their character and their management, good or bad, can potentially have significant impacts on their surroundings. And it's on that basis that you do the, do the regulation, so. But that's, we, we're the ones who raised that question in the first place, and now we have an answer. Thank you.
Okay.
You know, I had the same question, very similar question, so I kind of Googled converted dwelling, and I did find lots and lots of examples from around the country. So apparently in model, you know, in model law, model zoning codes, they're, you know, this used converted dwelling exists.
As a use.
Yes. And the purpose really is to protect those neighborhoods with white elephants, so they have very large houses that are no longer economically viable as single-family houses. So that was the reason that this, as far as I could tell from the commentary, why this came into existence. And so oftentimes, these model zoning codes have a, this only applies if the original structure is dated from such-and-such, you know, some normally pre-World War II.
Okay.
So I just thought of another reason why the two-family converted dwelling should be allowed. Never mind.
So Rick, you're Rick, you're Rick Perry moment.
I know, I know, I got my thought back.
EPA, right.
Two-family converted dwelling should be allowed, whether it's by special permit or by site plan review, I don't really care. But it can't always have to be owner-occupied because Amherst College owns a lot of property that they're converting to two-family houses, and that they would be considered converted dwellings.
Right.
So how, you know, you can't require Amherst College to occupy these dwellings because they're renting them to the faculty.
So really what we're talking about is taking that section two and saying, as you were saying before, that a conversion from one to two units that is a converted dwelling that is owner-occupied is by site plan review. A conversion from one to two that is not owner-occupied is by special permit. And we just need to have that language in that section.
If I recall correctly, when we talked about, we considered an exemption for the colleges, and we decided, no, they, they could actually get a special permit, that would be consistent and fair. So they, they could, they could do it, they didn't have to live there.
So are. So are, do we think that the language, the permitting standards in converted dwelling is consistent with duplex or whatever other possible use might result? Yeah?
I had, I had one other change, one.
Sure.
I want to play this part of it out.
What?
Oh, it's just that, at some point, we're going to have the conversation regarding two-family houses, regarding, should it be special permit, or should it be special permit planning?
That was, that was it.
Seriously?
For your chin.
Yes.
And so if we're going to have that conversation regarding two-family houses, we should have that conversation regarding converted dwellings where the result is a two-family house. So I think to be consistent, I would support that the planning board be the body that review either conversions or constructions of two-family, two-family houses, whether or not they're owner-occupied. So SPP versus SPR, as opposed to SP. So I guess we can come back to this when we have that conversation regarding two-family houses, but I want to just leave that part of it open for converted dwellings.
Okay. Did you want to follow up on that?
Well, just in, in doing the, the minutes, I know we talked about that, I had introduced it, and I sort of backed off from that, but in rethinking it, I, I would like to at least propose that as our recommendation to the full board. I don't know if they'll support that or not, but I, I feel like I was a little wimpy in supporting my own instinct to go with that, and I don't know if we'll, how we'll all decide, but I think, similar to Mr. Schreiber, I would rather start from the position of proposing special permit planning board and defend that, and then take it from there.
Could you clarify where you want SPP?
Wherever it is now, SP.
Wherever, including R, O, and RLD, that...
Where we're talking about ending up where the use is a two-unit.
Yes.
Yes.
Non-owner-occupied rented use.
Yes.
Whether it's a conversion, a duplex, whatever it is.
Yes, thank you.
It ends up being by special permit, and by, and then what they're saying is by planning board special permit.
And just to briefly reiterate, for people who might not have been following this, the standards that would be used, the criteria that the board would use are the same special permit criteria that the other board, the zoning board, uses. And I, I feel quite confident that the planning board is capable of issuing a special permit and being, with all the protections and considerations. And it gives a consistency to that class, that category of uses that we're so immersed in, and I think it would be appropriate to have one permit-granting authority. So the site plan review would be planning board, and the SPP would be planning board.
It's, it seems to me still that, that it would be preferable to just put that on duplexes. You know, if you're going to end up with a duplex, then, then planning board reviews it, whether it's site plan review or special permit. But to, but to also throw it on converted dwellings, it's just adding another layer of complexity that, which I guess if we, if we were able to do away with this, go ahead.
If I may, I think it, it's just, that's, that's just a question of notation, that, you know, instead of running them all on the same line, you have SP above, and that, that applies to, you know, more than two units. And SPR and SPP below with the explanations indicated in the, in the standards and conditions. Right now, it's confusing because it's all on the same line in part. I think it was visually different, it would make a difference.
Just so, so I guess my, what I was thinking is that only in the case where the result is a two-family, in the case of it's more than two, then it goes to zoning? Is that, or your...
If that, if that's your inclination, I just...
I haven't thought that part through as much, because I've been more focusing on just the two-family part.
Yeah, I, I as well.
But I think that the others are rarer, converting a dwelling to a three-family and higher.
If I may, apartments and townhouses, the definition of those uses is from three units and up.
Yeah.
So that's sort of a break, an existing threshold that is already by special permit.
Yeah.
Zoning board special permit, and that, if that was consistent as well, you know, however that works out, I think it would, that makes sense, for it to be two-family, whatever it is, two units is by site plan review or special permit, depending on owner occupancy, more than, three or more is by ZBA special permit. That would be a cleaner division. If that makes sense.
Um, okay. I, I'm, I think I agree with it, but I, I, it's hard for me to visualize what it's going to look like.
Yeah. But there are, just to, there are a lot of cases where one and two families are clumped together, so in our zoning code, but also if you get to more than two units, then an architect has to be involved, less, two units or less, an architect does not have to be involved. So there's a lot of, the, the International Building Code has a one and two family, and then everyone else. So, so oftentimes, one and two families are clumped together?
They're attached.
Yeah.
Okay.
You would apply that to single families as well, class, it would be planning board special permit.
Yeah.
For a class-two, single-family dwelling.
May I ask, are there questions, other questions about the converted dwelling besides, other than this issue? Remember, we had dealt with the issue of size of outbuildings, minimum threshold size for the conversion of, of, of outbuildings under condition nine.
I'm happy with 350 square feet. And I guess we should confirm that, that we're going to agree with council that, that we should not propose the rental registration requirement on each of these articles, as well as the main article? Because it suggests, I mean, there was...
For the grandfathering, or the potential for grandfathering, everything that's now on the ground.
Basically, too, the proposal would be to withdraw that amendment, and also to line it out, as you'll find in the copies in front of you, where it appears as part of the text of any of the use changes.
Um, line it out, or just not put it in the warrant?
Well, for now, line it out.
Yeah.
It would show up.
Right, okay. All right. Like I said, I think I agree with what you're getting at, but I'm, I'm not ready to make a recommendation, because I, because I, it's hard for me to, to explain what exactly it would be, so. So again, I, I guess I would suggest that unless, unless there's a majority that, that wants it, maybe it's something that, that we ask the, the board whether it wants to do or not. What do you think, Bruce?
Please pick up, don't swallow your words. We just need to track the microphone.
I'm suggesting that, rather than make a recommendation on SPP for single-family and duplexes, that we ask the planning board to make, to make that call. In other words, zoning subcommittee is not, does not have agreement about, unless, unless Bruce...
I, I would be content to just, to carry on as, as you suggested. I think that's a good, three units and up for the ZBA, and anything less for the...
Okay, so, so you're agreeing with them? So you, you do want to make that recommendation?
Yes.
Okay. So, so let's, let's recommend that. I'm going to abstain or, or object, or whatever, but, so I'm going to ask somebody else to, to explain it, please, tonight, and then, and then we'll see what, what the discussion, where it goes. So is, is there any more discussion on converted dwellings, or do we want to make a motion, or...
Ms. Brestow has had her hand up, but I do have one more other comment, but go ahead.
I just wanted to say one thing that just occurred to me. I don't have an opinion one way or another about it, but I think it's worth pointing out, that when you go from 500 square feet of exterior footprint to 350 square feet of habitable space, that takes in a lot of exterior detached structures, because you could have something that is, you know, fairly small, and then put a second story on it, and end up with 350 square feet of habitable space. So I'm just pointing that out to you, that that is also a change, that we've gone from footprint to habitable space, okay?
Yep, I think that's fine.
Just a, a small technical thing on 5C, it's new language. The conversion results in the creation of a minimum of one dwelling unit permanently affordable under the provisions of section 15.12 and fif, or 15.12. And maybe that's a typo. And eligible to be counted on the Commonwealth's 40B subsidized housing inventory, SHI, or its successor. I certainly know what the SHI is, but I think it might be technically more correct to give the master general law citation for chapter 40B and just say eligible or affordable on, as, with MGL, and I forget what it is, because...
40B, you mean the subsection?
Yeah, it's not, that's the subsection, but it's something like section 705 dash, blah, 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 it's easy. Because I think that's really where you're getting the authority from, counting is, but I don't have the substitute language. But is that a typo, 15.12 or 15.1?
No, it's a, if I may, let's see. Yeah, it is, let's see.
Oh, good, I can still read.
I think it should be just 15.12, period.
But I think for purposes of our discussion tonight, we can leave the language as it is, and then we'll probably be making some other little technical changes or tweaks, so if staff wanted to look up the citation and change it or not, we could do that later.
It's actually, I beg my pardon, it's 15.12 or 15.13.
Ah.
So, I, I don't really understand why, why I think it's important to identify the actual section. Have, haven't you suggested in other cases that we not get that specific, or somebody did, I'm not sure if it was you or not? It doesn't, it doesn't matter to me, I guess.
I don't really care, it's going to... It just seems strange to have the count, to be counted is sort of a, it's much more of a...
And that's where you, that's where the counting is authorized, you're saying?
We can blend the two. We can say the, the Commonwealth's, you know, MGL, chapter 40B, section, subsidized housing inventory. We can just cover both of them. We have both the, the broader descriptive language and the citation.
Because it includes what is affordable.
Okay.
Count.
Okay.
Make a motion?
Make a motion? Or we can...
A hand up, right here.
Ms. B...
Can I call the comments on this before we, before we...
Well, I think there's going to be, this is going to be a public hearing tonight for the full planning board.
Planning board, me.
So, and, and we have two other ones to get through tonight. If, if it's something that's really directly relevant, that we haven't considered, I, I will take comment, but, but I'd rather not get into an extended discussion, because we just don't have the time for it. But, but go ahead, do you have something that's relevant?
In those, those three criteria, three or more, the following criteria, wondering how, why, three, why three? And it seems like every one of them, at least some of them are compelling, but not stand on their own. It seems like it'd be hard to, to get all, get three, to be creating accessible and affordable and compelling public safety thing. And the others that I just don't get, how, if you convert something while there's an owner occupied, and you sell it, and they don't intend to own or occupy, then what? How is it enforced? I just don't get it.
Part of the title search for any sale turns up permits that have been issued in association with the property, and those permits describe what the use category is under which the permit was issued. If they wander outside of what the conditions are, then the use category changes, and it, it's like, you know, in a less obvious way, it's like going from an office to a restaurant, changing the use category. And while that may not be immediately apparent, it's supposed to turn up in the title search.
You know, in a way, it's like going from a house to an office, to follow up on the commercial...
Right, right.
Oh, I was just saying, in a way, it's like going from a residence to a commercial use. Be, yeah, so it's almost like a deed restriction? In other words, because it's attached to the deed?
Is there, anyone want to comment on, on requiring three criteria, as opposed to two, or four, or one, or...
Again, we were trying to establish a high priority. Do you want to take it to two? I think one is, I don't know, I would recommend more than one, but not...
Yeah, I'd say more than one.
For instance, the first, the first criteria there is in there because, under some circumstances, you, you have an attached outbuilding that has not been maintained, and it's falling down, and it represents a, a threat to public health and safety, and the building commissioner says, "Take it down," or do, or reinforce it. And so that becomes the threshold, or the trip, the tripwire that gets someone started on doing this. And while the community is obtaining the benefit of either the new construction or the removal of the threat, there, that's not really substantive benefit by itself. It's not forward progress, if you will, whereas any of the others are. Whether you're talking about accessibility, or affordability, or sustainable construction, or historic preservation, those are all positive forward steps. So one, by itself, because we have, we needed to accommodate potential threats to public health and safety, may not be enough.
I'm, I'm happy with one or more. I think it's a good point.
With more than one, or one or more, you said?
Yeah. At least two, or however we want to say it.
Two or more.
One or more.
Yeah, we have two or more, more than one, two or more.
Two or more, sounds good.
I'm not as fast as the first one, and make one of the other.
So the baseline is...
That's just the reason the company was not actually a reason for allowing something to, to have, get rid of it.
I think the, the reasoning was that it, that it does represent some benefit. It is removing a, a blighted portion of a structure, or it is repairing a blighted portion of a structure and reusing it. And so we didn't want to give no credit at all, or to have it be the default necessarily. But I, I don't think there's a terribly compelling case one way or the other. What's, what's the subcommittee's pleasure on that?
I think it's confusing enough, 20, 40 percent, that people are going to be resistant to it, unless, unless they feel like you have to meet a high bar. So I, so I think, e- even though I think the comments are, are, you know, good, they make sense. If, if the, if the goal is to pass this, to pass a, a, a new understanding of what a converted dwelling is, we don't want to put barriers in front of people to vote for it. And I think lowering a threshold is, is, is something that people will say, "Well, no, that's, that's too easy," or something, even if it's not. So I, I, I think two or more is, is fine. I don't have a problem with that. We can, we can consider it and, and, and change it some other time.
I agree, and I don't think we're going to see a lot of action under this section of the bylaws, so I'm not real worried about it right now.
Okay, single-family?
Well, um...
Oh, did you, that's right, was Sarah motion.
So we, we agreed to change it to two or more?
Two or more.
Two or more.
So I guess, do we want to make a motion, or do we want to just present our discussion?
So the motion would be to approve, or to recommend this as amended through this discussion, which would be having, let's see if I can remember all the things we've changed. So part of it is to allow in RVC and RG, non-owner occupied duplexes, but by special permit, but then the other one is to make that special permit, special permit planning. So those are the two major changes. And then the other one is two or more criteria rather than three or more criteria? Is that, is that it?
And a correction.
Oh, and a correction of the sections fifteen point one-two.
Right.
So I'll make that motion, as clumsy as it is, to recommend to the planning board that we approve this?
I will happily second.
Okay. Any further discussion? I'm, I'm just gonna say, I, I will vote to recommend it to the planning board, but I, but I will, I think I will stay tonight that I think that there's a better way of doing this overall. This is, this is a step in the right direction, but it's not the final step, I, I hope. So, on favor of recommending this to the planning board? Okay. So let's, sorry.
Do you vote yes?
Yes. Single-family dwellings. So this is more or less the same as we've been looking at previously? Were there any, any comments on?
As a consequence of, and this is, you should, everyone should be looking at the October third version, or left-hand corner. On the first page, the reference to rental registration has been removed. On the second page, most of what's happening is in the first two paragraphs. And these are recommendations by the town council to take out the, the phrase about being operated as a commercial enterprise, to have it be rented to or occupied exclusively by a household of unrelated persons, because there can be informal, you know, tenancy, it will, you know, no, no money is changing hands arrangements where you could end up with, of, up to four unrelated persons in a household, and you still want to be able to regulate that, that circumstance. Taking out the, the language which was replicating language in the existing definition of unrelated, a group of unrelated persons, taking out cooperatively and on a temporary basis, which was something we added based on our review of functional family definitions. He thought that that would be better to be added when we add the functional family definition, if it makes sense at that time. And then he thought that second paragraph on the second page was just unnecessary. That's all required as it, as, as it stands. And it's not stated for the class one, single-family dwellings, which nonetheless would also need to meet those criteria. So he, he was trying to create in this a, a more challenge-proof set of language, since he anticipates that someone might challenge it.
Comments? I noticed, in the class one, we, we, in the standards and conditions, the second principal residence four, one, two, household running consisting of, of what our current definition of family is, but what, we're proposing an actual, slightly different definition of family slash household. So.
We could just say as defined under, cite the section. Twelve point one-four-one.
Okay, so are we, we are contemplating SPP, first class two, is that correct? Or? Anyone have a comment?
If this were to get as far as being a zoning article, I would recommend for consistency, site plan review, planning board, a couple of comments. I thought, I, I guess similar to what we did with two family dwellings, I would suggest not having class one or class two, but using owner occupied and non-owner occupied, and just label them as what they are, what those categories actually mean.
Except in this instance, that's not what you had originally, and/or what, or what's in here. It's not just about owner occupancy, the first category, which is, would still be by right.
Or family, or?
Would be, would allow a rental without the, an owner occupant.
So there isn't a handy label for it?
Because the handy label was part of.
All right, so we're starting, I sort of got.
Family rental versus not family.
Bang our heads on the wall about that for some time.
Okay, so you can, you can live there yourself or rent to whatever our current working definition in, in the bylaws of family. I guess, I guess I'm stuck with that, for that reason, I tried. And I, I guess I'll just state, and maybe I'll be, my mind will be changed by our discussion, but I, I'm still opposed to regulating single-family homes to this degree. So, right now, I'm unconvinced, and I, I wouldn't vote to recommend this, but I want to keep an open mind, just really getting to this now in a series of meetings we've had, so.
Your concern is that, is that discretionary, any discretionary restriction on, on a single-family home might be a bad thing? Is that what you're saying?
No, I, I feel like if I own a single-family home in town, I should be able to choose responsible tenants and be a responsible owner-manager, whatever that means definitionally legally, and not be limited to who I can rent to, as long as they don't exceed the, the four unrelated. But I want to be able to, to rent to either relateds or unrelateds. And I don't, I think this is too constraining.
What if, what if class two was site plan review? Would that change your mind, or is that, that still?
No, it's not really about that. I have an asset, and I want to have the rights and responsibilities to find tenants. And I think when I leave town, decide to live in a, the house next door, and I have the house next to me, and I want to rent it out, I find this too constraining.
Would, would it be fair to say that a system of rental regulations that was not zoning, that did not make this differentiation between single and double and so forth, but was just on the basis of whether or not something is being rented, there, then there's a set of regulations the town has that applies to that, that that would be more palatable than this?
When we have, I think you're asking if we had a full-blown rental inspection, registration system that we don't yet have to review, but assuming that we will and that were in place, then I would, I would be fine with that regulating single-family dwellings, correct. But restricting who I can rent to, to this degree is, is just not something I can support.
So, oh, go ahead, Steve.
Yeah, so I think that, I just, no, I tend, no, I do agree with that, that, in other words, the, I'm not sure it's the base unit of the single-family house that's the, the issue. I think it's the single-family houses that are kind of illegally converted, or, so, in other words, I, I just don't think that, yeah. I think, I think rental registration will take us in a huge step in the right direction, because we'll know who's being rented or not. But I'm just thinking of the one case in my life that I've actually rented a house to someone. We rented to two people that weren't related, so the idea that I would have had to go through special permit to, to do that is a little mind-boggling.
Two people who are unrelated, and they're not a family or a household, or whatever you're saying?
Exactly. So just, it was a man and a woman unrelated, so then we would have had to go through special permit.
Eventually be denied.
Yeah. And then, who knows, lead time, and go back, and, yeah.
I, I would be in favor of this at, at the present time, because I think due to the circumstances that are going on in the town, I think this is not too much to ask.
Let me ask a further, hopefully refining question. We, when we started, we had in, under class one, not only an individual or a group of persons as defined, and by the way, a group of persons as defined under twelve point one-four-one could be two unrelated, no, I'm sorry. We, we had two unrelated persons as a, as a category that was under this.
But not four.
But not, but not, that's right, but not more than two.
So, but here's the thing, is that, I'm sorry. Here's the thing, that really the intent is exactly this, site plan review, right? So we're, want to see that, you know, parking, we want to see, you know, the kinds of things that would, the impact on neighbors. And I just don't see a high impact of four or less unrelated adults living in a house. If it's more than four, then it already is a zoning violation, but I just don't see how.
Well, I'm just, I, I think, yeah, it, it's not necessarily, but, but the fact is that, the complaint is that you can, right now, you can have a house and rent it to whomever, and no one knows about it. So, so this is an attempt to make sure that somebody knows about it. And so I think, I, I think, I, I sort of agree with you, but I think at least site plan review is, is a good idea, so that, so that it has to come before board. It's not, site plan review would not be discretionary. I mean, you would have to say yes, but, but you could say, you know, we don't want you to pave over the whole yard, or, or if it's going, if it's going to be not owner occupied, you know, we want some sort of screening, or, and, you know, this and that.
I was gonna say that it's actually been the case that there have been as many, I'm being reckless here, but my impression, in talking to the zoning enforcement officer and our new code enforcement officer, there have been as many problem properties that are nominally occupied by no more than four unrelated people, but who consistently have many people more visiting on weekends, and there, you know, a band is practicing there, or, you know, it's, given, given the population that is strongly likely to occupy a single-family rental in Amherst, as distinct from anywhere else, the potential that that population is going to be active and boisterous and noisy and impactful is fairly high. And that, that was part of the reason for trying to make this distinction in the first place, that there's a difference, and a, and a fairly consistent difference in impact between the class one groupings, including the two, the two unrelated, and the class two.
I, in thinking about this, I think that it's such a, it's kind of sensitive and current issue, that I'm comfortable moving it along and letting maybe the full board, and maybe even town meeting, take a shot at that, and have different, we can have a majority, minority presentation, or whatever, so that people can hear the thinking that we've had, but I don't want to necessarily withhold this opportunity to have a full-blown discussion for the whole town, because I think it is such a sensitive issue. So how I feel about it personally, and how I view it, or even how I view it professionally, I don't want to deny people a chance to look at this from all the different points of view.
I guess I'm a little bit worried about creating a nation of scofflaws, as they used to say about the prohibition. Where basically that it's so, such a difficult bar to meet that nobody pays attention.
Or implies, or.
Yeah, yeah, as, as I pointed out, it's already, it's already exists, yeah.
We do for, well, okay. But I'm not, this, that's, it's an enforcement issue, so in other words, it's really the four unrelated, because the, you know, first of all, we have no idea, you know, goes through site plan review, everything looks good, but we still have no control over who lives there.
Right, but it would be a zoning violation if you didn't come in front of some board.
I, I was just gonna say again, as, as you were saying earlier, this also does involve parking issues, and even, even where the trash is going to be. So I think somebody reviewing an initial plan is, is really not a bad idea. It might be, simple things might be avoided instead of having to be problems later.
Vince, do you have a relevant comment? Please.
Vince O'Connor, Summer Street. And I, I've read, actually just was back there reading Mr. Farber's letter, who's a primary attorney for a lot of landlords in town. And I agree with the comments about the regulating single-family homes through the zoning bylaw. I, I really think that the way you deal with problems, single-family homes, is to create a permitting system, and that anyone who owns, like, more than two, three or more, you know, or two or more, or something like that. I mean, I, I think we can all understand circumstances where somebody ends up owning a house that they couldn't sell, and they move someplace else, or a family, a family member passes away, or moves, and they, and they rent out their house. I don't think we want to capture people in our net, those people in our net. And, and I also agree with Mr. Farber, that I'm not really that concerned about how many people live in, in places, because I think that part of the bylaw is unenforceable, truly unenforceable. I, I really do think that it has to do with behavior. It's, it's not a question, most of the property in town is not hundred years old, like in Holyoke or Springfield, it's, it's relatively new. The sanitary code issues are not things that I'm concerned about, I'm concerned about behavior. And the way you address behavior is through a permitting system that focuses on behavior, and, or the failure of the people in charge to control behavior, including the tenants. And the only thing I don't agree with Mr. Farber about is the, the ease with which you can rid oneself of a tenant, because as far as I'm concerned, when you have photographic and documentary evidence of signs on property that advertise beer for five dollars and all-you-can-drink for twenty-five dollars, that, it seems to me, is grounds for the people who are responsible to be trespassed off the property by the landlord. Not evicted, trespassed off the property. And because they pose an immediate threat to the landlord, because in those circumstances, that will make that house a nuisance house, and if the proposed changes to the general bylaw take place, that will mean that the response costs will be assigned jointly and severally to the landlord, the management company, and the tenants. And I don't think there are many property owners who want to be receiving bills for thousands of dollars every month, that we have good weather and, and tenants who think that houses are, that, because they rent a house, it's, it's actually a bar. So I really think it's behavior-oriented stuff, and I, I, and I don't think that behavior-oriented regulation belongs in the zoning bylaw.
I, I agree, I just want, we're not really discussing right now Mr. Farber, Attorney Farber's letter, I don't know if we will, it's not really on our agenda, it is sort of peripherally, I don't want to debate where he's right or where he's wrong, some of it was helpful, some not, but because we are so strongly in support of a future rental registration system, which I would support, including single-family rentals, I would, I would rather let that do the job of regulating behavior and enforcement than layering on what I see as, as pretty restrictive onerous bylaws, and that's why I'd rather hold. And that's why I'd rather hold back on regulating single-family homes until after the spring when we hopefully can put something more effective in place. So sort of agreeing with Mr. O'Connor and suggesting that we hold our fire on the single-family homes.
Any other comment on that? I, it sounds like we're not gonna be able to make a recommendation one way or another. Because I definitely think.
How about a recommendation to discuss that? Or to, I was even thinking of table it.
Oh, to table it for spring?
I think in order to have a full enough discussion for the board to make that decision, I think it's better that you forward it and just present the different perspectives on this to the board rather than coming up with a, let's table it, that everyone will grab at that because it'll be easier. But I think you really need to talk about it.
So no recommendation on the article itself, but a recommendation to discuss the article and come to a decision at some point.
Two-family?
Okay. Two-family dwellings. Can you discuss the additions that you suggested?
Yes, this is the same thing. This is, the changes in front of you are the result of a conversation with town council on the first page. Again, this is dated 10-3, first page, the rental registration section. I'm sorry, this is the two-family dwelling amendment. And the changes that are shown on the October 3rd version of this are the result of a conversation with town meeting, or excuse me, with town council this afternoon. On the first page, the rental registration provision has been struck as had been done in the cases we've already discussed. On the second page, there is a new section. And this is not necessarily meant to be the definitive result, but one of the things that town council recommended, and this would also be true for the single-family dwelling amendment for Class Two, if you went forward with it, to add a list of criteria, as there are under converted dwelling, all of those numbered standards and conditions, such that the rental units are not being so isolated and you are in some ways describing what it is that the community wants out of this. I would point out that in addition to names and contact information for the responsible parties, a management plan, which is sort of derek er. Town council mentioned requiring a response plan from the property owners or landlords or managers, basically describing, in the event of a complaint, what is the management going to do? And what are the steps that the management is going to take? And those then get tied to the permit. And if they follow through on those, then they're following the permit. If they don't follow through, then they're in violation of the permit. Mention of the provisions of Article 7, which is the parking section, particularly 7.1, which is the design section that was just amended at the Springtown meeting. And then mention of a bond or surety to cover the costs of responses. I would note that town council, at least preliminarily, did not necessarily think that the cost of subsequent defense in court of an enforcement action was something that the community could require, either require in a bond or be able to calculate in a bond since a court case could take three months or three years. But this is meant to illustrate, it's not yet complete. This meant to illustrate the kind of thing that should be applied here for the rental version, the non-owner-occupied version, and similarly with the single-family category, Class Two.
So why, why would these be in zoning and not in the rental permitting or rental registration?
They would be. He's saying, this is in front of us, if you're going forward with this as a zoning amendment, these are the ways to make it stronger and more complete.
Comments? Could you come to the mic, please, so that people can hear?
I just prefer to raise, Maureen Adams, Precinct 10. I prefer to raise it here rather than pop it at the planning board. But on this issue, the, again, the verb may. The reason I pick on that under the non-owner-occupied is if we are removing non-owner-occupied, both from this and from converted dwellings, which I was very sad to see, but I see your logic, it seems to me that the least that we could expect of buildings that have eight unrelated people in them is that they shall have some kind of resident manager or similar provision for proper management of the rental unit. I don't like leaving doubt there. It seems to me it's the least that we can do considering the conditions that we're talking about.
So I guess I would respond that the permitting body can make it a shall, but they don't have to make it a shall. Right?
I'm just gonna say that the reason it's may is the same reason it was may in the other instance where we cannot foresee all ends. We don't know what every single application is going to be like. And this also applies to other zoning districts. It applies to the neighborhood business district, applies to neighborhood residents, to outlying residents, to low-density residents. There may be circumstances, I think one was described earlier, where you had a, where the owner of the property lived next door.
That would be a provision for proper management. I mean, it's unimaginable that there would not be a provision for proper management of a rental.
That's right. The question is, it's not a may with regard to proper management. It's more that there are mechanisms being listed short of owner occupancy since there is no owner occupancy required in this case.
That's, I think Ms. Adams raised a good point. So you're saying that it's not necessarily that, not necessarily that the shall applies to the resident manager, but some sort of proper management, shall?
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
That makes sense to me.
I support that.
So we, yeah, we've gone back and forth on this.
I'm just rereading the section because, again, I can think of an instance where being automatically, it's sort of like mandatory sentencing, that I'm running to, you know, my best friend from graduate school were retired people and I'm told that I have to have a resident, I have to have some kind of professional management. So I'm just, I just want to point out, we got criticized in the paper for arguing over may and shall. And I want to say that legally, it actually is important. And I think it's worth having the discussion. I just want to go on record to people who might have thought that that was sort of, we were being trivial in talking about may or shall. But it's substantial, it's a substantial issue and we will continue to debate may and shall whenever it's appropriate. And when you're agreeing with you.
And we do read the newspapers.
About its importance, and I may not agree with you about this.
I was going to ritually restate what I had said before.
So.
I don't feel the need.
Right, so in this case, may, the use of may means that the ZBA could require an onsite resident manager if they want. They could turn it into a shall.
Yes.
In the case that you describe, that would open the possibility that they could also require that in the case that you describe and you think that might be a bad thing. It doesn't mean that they have, that, it doesn't, a shall would not mean that they, that they could, that you could propose a similar provision and have it accepted.
I'm looking at this and the offending word here is proper. Because it does, it doesn't belong. If we take that word out, similar provision for management of the rental use, it's presumed, one, and two, it confuses things. It gives you the opportunity to believe that if it's may, then somehow the board could decide to have improper management allowed, which is nonsensical, but confusing. So I would propose instead striking the word proper and keeping the word may so that again, as you have the opportunity to respond to a range of as-yet-unforeseen circumstances. The permitting body does.
Okay, but so, so what, similar provision for management of rental use? Could the owner of the duplex who lives in Levert or Arlington or wherever claim to be the manager of the rental use?
It would be up to the permitting body to decide whether or not that was sufficient in the instance. In one instance, it might absolutely not be that person who was the owner of rental property all over the place and had a generally unsuccessful record. Or in another case, that same person could have their brother-in-law living next door who was going to provide in the management, as described in the management plan, all of the management needed for the property. It's just, the range of possibility here is so wide that if you get prescriptive, you take away flexibility that may be needed.
I'm gonna go on the side of shall. Just because it's got, for starters, there is the default sanitary code. And so that's the default for whether or not it's being managed. And so whether it's your, you know, your friend or, that would be the manager, right? The onsite resident manager would be your friend who is capable of having the garbage taken in, all the things that are covered in the, either the state sanitary code or, you know, elsewhere in town bylaw. But I think this is a shall.
Right, so.
And I think that there's many ways to meet the shall, but I do think that the house has, the property has to be managed.
And the flexibility is built into, it can be a qualified professional management company, it can be an onsite manager or something similar.
And it also gives.
Saying similar, yeah.
I'm sorry?
No, no.
Well, it also gives something, to me, it just appears to give something to enforce. Like, you know, the zoning enforcement officer can see that it's not being properly managed. And so therefore, this criterion isn't being met.
One of the kind of glitches is if we're saying it could include assigning the tenant or the resident to be the resident manager, we've been taken to task for some people saying, well, this doesn't mean anything because everybody will just make the renter the resident manager and they'll fulfill that shall, but what is it?
So which is fine, actually, because I think that, for example, there's a house with eight unrelated, it's a duplex with unrelated that lives near me, and I would actually love to know who the single person is who is in charge, yeah.
So that person would have to be identified on the permit.
So it could be a tenant, in other words.
It could be a tenant.
Yeah.
Might have a very qualified tenant, or he might have a completely unqualified tenant.
But at least you have somebody, right? There's a go-to person.
Would it help if this phrase, which also appears in the single-family, a similar phrase, appears in the single-family amendment, was rearranged such that the permit granting body shall require provision for appropriate management of the rental use as a condition of approval? Such provision may include the following, this, that, or the other, or similar provision. Does that, does that better address the question?
Please.
Barbara Puffer, 85, Montague Road. Thanks for listening for a minute to a personal experience. I am very confused about a lot of what's going on because I have missed some of it. I'll catch up. I appreciate very much what Connie Kruger has brought out as things to be very conscious of. And the proposed bylaws, as you are discussing them now, I would like to know if in other communities there are statistics that show that certain of these have resulted in much improved circumstances, or are we kind of feeling our way? That's my first question. The second thing is it's worth knowing our experience on Montague Road. It so happens that my companies or myself own rental homes on Montague Road. And I am also in the group of people often suffering from some of the overspill from the nuisance houses that are farther up on Montague Road. We have a management company that takes care of our houses alongside myself, Hawkeye. And we have been very, very lucky. 64 Montague Road, 72 Montague Road, and 82 Montague Road have been quiet, good tenants. One home consistently has college-age youths and works fine. Further up in our neighborhood, we have several nuisance houses. So my second question is, and repeated nuisance houses, it doesn't matter how many times they get a fine of $300. It doesn't matter how many police cars come zooming at 1:00 and 2:00 and 3:00 o'clock in the morning. These are repeat nuisance houses. So between now and, you know, when we get to heaven with all of this stuff, what, I have to, I have to go back to the issue of behavior. Because what do I hear in the middle of the night? Screaming drunk people. If we do not come to an agreement with UMass that they address the issue of alcohol, it's gonna be catastrophic. I notice it particularly because I have spent so much of my life in Japan, in France, and in Switzerland, where young people from the age of 13 and 14 learn how to drink in their homes. And it's a public disgrace, a public disgrace to your family if you get drunk in college and so forth. So that perspective is worth knowing. What steps, is it relevant in this body to talk about what steps are going to be taken for our nuisance houses, which repeatedly, these last weekends, despite all kinds of extra security being put on, people going to talk with these folks, this has not stanched the problem of the nuisance houses. So naturally, because I live there and because I'm a homeowner, and what happens to me if I have the opportunity, third question and last, to buy a four-family house nearby to my house? I can't live in all of them!
So, yeah, so we, I guess we have heard a lot of discussion about regulating behavior and we agree with you, I think. And we understand that a task force is working on bringing something forward to address that, hopefully by spring. We're working on another section of it. We're working on, are there zoning regulations that we can do to help around the edges, I guess?
Yeah, it's multiple things moving forward at once. The select board is in regular discussion, town manager is in regular discussion with UMass administrators, and particularly with the Dean of Students' Office. They're gonna be providing, the Dean of Students' Office is gonna be providing the town with data on its responses to complaints of those kinds of behaviors. And it is becoming, as I understand, more strict. I haven't seen the data, though. I haven't seen the data, though. Town staff and others are working on the development of rental regulations as a separate general bylaw that will come to the spring, and this effort is looking at ways to tweak the existing zoning regulations, dealing with single families that might become rentals, two families that might become rentals, or converted dwellings that might become rentals, to see if there are ways in which we can adjust the zoning regulations to also address a piece of this. It's, it's, everything's sort of moving forward at once. No one piece of this is going to solve the whole thing. I guarantee you.
Because Jonathan, you talk about proper management, but the men, the same management company that has my houses also has other houses. How is it that some of those houses are nuisance houses and not others? I mean, it's not, you know, what is this proper management? You mean effective management? You mean people who have tenants who never move?
As I said, we can address pieces of this. The piece of this we can address is when someone comes in to get a permit to operate one of these residential uses, what are the regulations, what are the conditions that we can put on them in order to get that permit, and then in order to operate the use that they've asked for going forward? Can we address who lives there and whether or not they're well-behaved people? No, that's a, that's a different area of, of law and enforcement, and it will require both the town's response through many of the things that we're already doing, regulation of kegs, the regulation of nuisance houses, in terms of underage drinking and parties, noise violations and so forth. On the one hand, it arrests where warranted. UMass dealing with it through the dean of students' office in terms of violations of the university's code of conduct for students. The campus community coalition, which deals with drinking issues and tries to knit together solutions to this, it's going to require all, just that piece of it, the behavioral thing, it's going to require all three of those. We're over here on the side, dealing with the permitting for the use through zoning, and how do we address that? That's really what this piece is about.
So how do you address the fact, sorry, that somebody who, like myself, lives on Montague Road, has houses there, okay, I'm going to buy a four-unit something or other on Summer Street or Pine Street or wherever, then what happens to me?
You have to go through the permit process if you decide to do that, to operate that use.
So where do I live?
There, you would, if you were not living there, it would be a special permit for whatever use it was.
If I'm living on Montague Road, I can't buy a four-unit place on Pine Street?
You can.
Have to move.
No, no.
You need a special permit.
You would just have a different permit requirement. Instead of, instead of, if you were, if it's an owner-occupant use, it's generally by right-through-site-plan-review approval. If it's not an owner-occupied use, if you're not there, then it's a special permit. That's the difference.
She could buy it and then not grant it a special permit.
A special permit is discretionary. Ninety-eight-plus percent of them are granted with various levels of conditions.
I'm just with Connie. I don't want you.
That makes me nervous whenever anyone agrees with me out there.
I don't want anybody to discourage people who have invested their life in this town from continuing to invest in this town.
If I may, the place to address that and the place where, I'm sorry, the place where that will be addressed best is through the rental regulations that are being aimed at the spring, and where, those are not under discussion now. We're, we're dealing with the zoning.
So we're, Mr. Chair, we're sort of at a junction. We haven't agreed on may or shall, and we're, I think this is, this is less, we're getting near the end of our time, so if we could come back to our conundrum around that.
And after that, I have two more things that I need you to deal with before you leave, so.
Okay. What time does dinner come?
About 11:30.
Chris, do you want to say anything about may or shall?
I, I think, considering that shall would also include possibly a responsible tenant, I think shall is fine. I would agree with that.
Okay. Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm going to go with shall. I think it's, it's what people want.
I'll fall back on that one.
I think there's enough flexibility there that, that it's not, it doesn't, it doesn't mean an onsite resident manager, but it's, it might.
But I'm still reserving my right to oppose a bylaw regulating single-family homes.
Yeah.
Could I say that if you agree on that language in this section, which is in the two-family section, could, would you agree on the replication of that language exactly in the single family?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
So you have a different formulation in single-family?
Yes, and I think it should be the same, if I may.
Yeah.
As newly worded.
Yeah, as worded in the single-family one.
But Jonathan, you had restated it about 10 minutes ago.
Well, I had, what I would suggest is instead that it reads something like this. The permit granting body shall require appropriate management of the rental use as a condition of approval under this section. Provisions may require the ongoing services of a qualified, et cetera, et cetera, the listing of things, or similar provisions. Does that make sense?
I like the way it's stated in, in, in single-family dwellings.
Single-family?
Let's read that.
The special permit granting authority shall require the ongoing services of qualified professional property management company, presence of an onsite resident manager, or similar provision for management of the rental use as a condition of approval.
Yeah, I think that sounds good.
Is that okay?
Okay. So is there further discussion on, on two families? Or a motion? Or do we want to just bring it forward without a motion? Well, I'm going to move in. I, I would like to recommend this to the planning board with the changes that we've discussed tonight.
Shh.
I actually don't want to.
It's hard to hear with.
A motion, a motion was made to recommend it to the planning board.
Yeah, actually, with, without, without the town council list, I, I think that's, I think that's properly in, in the rental permitting. Ms. Puffer and Mr. O'Connor, could you take it outside, please, because it's distracting for us?
A second to motion, as so modified that we.
Further discussion in favor? Okay, that's 4-0.
Okay. Quickly, there is the residential zone, there are the residential zoning definitions. This includes a new definition of dwelling unit, which is basically lifted from the state building code, so that that's all consistent. This includes not the functional family definition, but changes to the existing sections of definitions of family to recognize civil unions, guardianship, and other duly authorized custodial relationships under related family, is his recommendation, that we take the temporary or seasonal basis, all of that, out of the group of unrelated persons, just leave it as it is, and it would add a section recognizing group residences that are exempt under state and federal law for various reasons. It adds a new definition of habitable space, because we, we've referred to that now in a couple of places in, in the new amendments. It adds the definition of principal residence, I'm sorry, skipped over owner occupants. It simply adds a reference to the definition of principal residence under owner occupant. It adds a new definition of principal residence, which I think addresses many of the questions that people have had, with, including an emphasis on the indices of residency, including declaration of home and homestead, filing of state and federal income taxes and so forth, and it adds a definition of resident manager.
Okay, and this, this public hearing is scheduled for two weeks from tonight.
Right.
Is there any quick questions? We're going to have a fuller discussion of this next time. I just have one question about family, household. Are you, you're not proposing to replace family with household, you're, you're.
No, add, add it in perenns, so that where, wherever household is referred to in the bylaw, it also applies.
Okay.
Are there other questions about that?
Questions on that?
Very quickly, I would like to note that tonight there will be a public hearing on lodging or boarding houses. We have received some communication that indicates that the definition, and the staff at least agree, that the definition in terms of thresholds for occupancy for a lodging or boarding house should be, the lower threshold should be dropped from six to four. Many, many communities use that threshold. It makes sense in a number of other ways, and so it would, what we're proposing is that you consider having it be from four to 10, rather than from six to 10, which is a narrower envelope. It makes, also makes it more flexible. You can have this as a principal use with fewer rooms being let.
And how, would that affect the permitting at all? It doesn't, no?
If I understand, so my living situation changes, I'm alone in my house, I have five bedrooms, I live in one of them, and I want to have a boarding house, and I'm going to provide meals for people who are boarders in those four other bedrooms, or four individuals, and right now, the four, the four-member boarding house doesn't exist.
No, it does. You can do four to six as an accessory use through a special permit. The distinction is, you still, somebody may still want to do it as an accessory use. In this case, it's a principal use.
So I could come in from another dwelling, I could come in from my house next door in a different lot, and I could run the boarding house.
Yes.
And cook the meals, and have four boarders in the four bedrooms, and that would be the primary use, because it's the only thing that's happening there, it's not my principal residence.
That's correct. Or a manager could be onsite.
So I guess my question is just, is that going to increase the likelihood of more boarding houses than we have now, and sort of with, to put words in Ms. Adams' mouth, but concern that we're going to have more boarding houses operating within certain neighborhoods as now an allowed primary use?
Well, the definition says the building shall be occupied by the owner of the property or the manager of the use, so I don't, I don't think it does.
It's not, it's not my primary residence that the primary use is the boarding house use. I don't get, how can it be both?
In the instance where the, when the, where the property owner is in residence, you really have two uses in the, two principal uses in the, in the building. You have the single dwelling unit, and you have the lodging or boarding house.
Mr. Special?
I think it says in this section, the owner or manager of the lodging or boarding house shall reside on the premises, so I think you have to have.
That's the current regulation.
Someone residing there.
That's the current regulation.
You have to have either an owner or a manager residing there.
Okay, so I'm trying to understand why we need this distinction between primary or.
We don't have a definition right now for a lodging or boarding house.
I know why we're having, adding the definition, but why are we changing the number?
Right, because four to six is already covered under, under accessory.
Yeah.
It's covered under an accessory use if you've got a resident there, as accessory to a single-family residence.
But as a primary use, it could be a manager.
It could be a manager.
Okay, so that's the difference. I just.
Right, right. I would also note that this use is not permitted in the RN, the RRO, the RLD, or the RG district. The only district in which this use is permitted, residential district under special permit, is the RVC district. It is allowed by site plan review in the general business district, and special permit in all of the mixed-use center districts. It has, part of what accompanied this, and I think is in your planning board packet, there's also a zoning history of lodging or boarding houses there, and it follows a similar track.
Well, I want to have a dinner break for 10 minutes, but I want to say, if we're confused, is this perhaps adding that new change going to make it a thornier issue to get through, when really what we want is to get a definition of boarding houses on the books, start changing the numbers and how it's allowed? I'm just worried, unless there's a compelling reason, why are we doing that now, this late in the game, when we seem to have consensus of support on a, in a non, about something that wasn't controversial, could potentially make it controversial?
We're just raising the possibility. You can say, don't do it.
You said we weren't going to raise new possibilities this late in the game on things we had already reviewed.
Okay, I, I agree with Connie. I'd like to stick with six, and we can consider four some future time. Any objection to that? Okay, so we'll stick with our original recommendation. Okay, so we have 10 minutes before the planning board starts. Is there anything else that is really pressing?
You, you will have, you received copies of the petition articles, the zoning articles. We will at your next meeting, or probably before then, have information from both town council and a summary. You've also already received the description of the intent from, from the petitioners. We'll try and get you more detailed technical, this is what this does, summaries prior to your next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Jonathan, could, could you also include with that, is, is the, the task force already considering some of these initiatives anyway, or something similar to them?
No, what the task force is considering is a set of regulations for any rental property. And that, and the question of lodging or boarding house is a good question, because those, those are rentals, but they're different, because they're, they are, they're rooms rather than dwelling units.
No, no, I mean, in the, in the citizen petitions, are there any parallels in what's being discussed to the task force?
Yes, yes.
Because we really need that information.
There, there, yes. We will do that.
Okay.
Thanks a lot for your explanation.
Anytime.
You're going to drag me out of town?
No, no, we're not.
Okay.
See, something as small as that, good grief.
No, because what you say is so much of my people, and it was like, yes, listen to Connie.
Remember to ask you if you want.
We can find it.
Oh, no, thank you. Oh, it's okay. I appreciate that, thanks.
Right.
I'm trying to listen furiously and write furiously and try to contribute.
It's enabled by 40B.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
I may not have even done that.
I'll get this out in case anybody wants to borrow it.
Do you want a cup of coffee, Mr. Tucker?
That would be a delightful idea.
A little bit of sugar and a little bit of milk.
Are you aware of this?
Yes.
Okay, it's my treat.
Thank you.
I'm not a good nonfiction writer.
Okay, because a number of us have read it, and I thought if anybody else on the board wanted to read it.